Board of Park Commissioners, regular board meeting for the date of Wednesday, December 12th, 2018 is now in session. Let the record reflect that there was no executive session held, therefore, no need for certification. Roll call?
Commissioner Tommy Williams, Commissioner Juanita Jackson, Commissioner President Dwight Gardner.
Here. We do have a quorum and will proceed. We'll now have our pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice. I would address your attention to the Board of Park Commissioners' minutes from the date of Wednesday, November 14th, and entertain a motion for approval of minutes.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tommy Williams, Commissioner Juanita Jackson, Commissioner President Dwight Gardner.
Yes. I would now address your attention to claims and payroll for the dates, claims for the date through December 12th, and payroll approval for the period ending on December 7th.
Mr. President, we do not have a payroll report when the process of moving our park's office and things were boxed up, so we'll have to report it the next week.
Okay. Let me ask you this question about the claims. We have three claims for Don is our Gleason Park Golf Course manager. Actually, there are four, and all of them are on this report.
Right. So what Don is, we've had, what, two payrolls since the last meeting? So what goes on with Don is Don actually gets two checks every two weeks. One for the contract that we signed for the amount of $50,000, and then one because in 2017, instead of his rate of $50,000, he was, it was about $38.5, and so we owe him additional $12,000. So you'll see four payments. That represents those two different checks that he gets.
Okay. And under the chemical for 2019, is that what we got, what we weren't able to put down? Or is this something different?
So, no, this is something different. What we're looking to do is get a jumpstart on the golf season next year, and so we've ordered what we need for, not only for Gleason, but another thing that we're looking to do is clearing the overgrown vegetation that is around, around, excuse me, within the pathway to any of our parks. So for like example, Borman, if you drive past Borman on Eighth Avenue, on Eighth Avenue side, heading west, the block where the park is is fine, but then you go two blocks west, and there's overgrown vegetation, there's a tree, there's overgrown grass because there are vacant lots. And so on occasions, what I've seen is people who want to access the park or just walk down the street have had to walk in the street. So we want to make it as safe as possible for people to be able to get to and from our parks. And so some of those chemicals will be used to address the overgrown vegetation, not only at Borman, but in some of our other areas. So I'm trying to go within like a three-block radius in each direction to make sure that people have a safer route to get to our parks.
Okay. Any questions from Borman's? Then I'll entertain a motion that we would approve the claims as presented through the date of December 12th.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tommy Williams, Commissioner Juanita Jackson, Commissioner Dwight, President Dwight Gardner.
Yes. That takes us to our legal report.
Yes, we have two professional service contracts before the board today. The first is for Don, it's renewal of his contract, not to exceed $50,000 again, exact same terms as previous contracts, and it runs from January 1st to December 31st, 2019. Asking the board to approve that.
Is the rearage that you were talking about, it is satisfied in 2018?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion that we would approve the professional services contract for our golf course manager. Can I have my food approved?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tommy Williams, Commissioner Juanita Jackson, Commissioner President Dwight Gardner.
Yes.
Okay. That takes us to our next contract, we'll get the contract for Legal Services for Andrea McGraw, and that's for a total fee of $24,000 for January 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2019, based on the similar terms of the last agreement.
Questions from board members? Can I come off and approve?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Tommy Williams, Commissioner Juanita Jackson, Commissioner President Dwight Gardner.
Yes.
That ends the report for legal.
Okay. Administrative reports?
All right. Commissioner Jackson, Marquette Pavilion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first concern that we have is the dishwasher is out at Marquette Pavilion. Holger normally does the repairs on the appliance, but they will not come out if we do not have a credit card payment, because they say we pay too slow. So all the dishes right now have to be washed by hand.
Let me ask a question before you proceed. Marquette Pavilion is in the block? So when did we fall out of being in the block?
Towards the end of the season. And so one of the things that we've done in an effort to reduce these kinds of things, Camisha discovered that there were a lot of bills that were on the table. And so what we don't want to do is put ourselves further in the hole, so we've just been paying vendors as our budget allows. So it's just one of those things where you're in the season where things slow down, revenue slows down, and so you're not able to catch up to pay your bills as you would like to. However, Camisha and I have talked extensively, Camisha's come up with a series of ideas to address the lack of revenue that we've traditionally experienced over the off-seasons year on year, year on year. And so we're attempting to address that. I think we've got some solutions to get that repaired, but that is one of their concerns.
How much is that bill?
We don't know how much it is because they don't come out.
They have a minimum service contract. My question is, how soon can we project making that happen?
Well, we talked about some alternatives earlier, right before the meeting, so we're going to see if we can make those happen immediately. I feel confident it's probably our best option. So we're going to see if we can make that happen.
Okay. All right, let's move forward. Next topic.
We would like some permission from the board to put out a RFP for the concession stand for the summer of 2019. I think that the sooner we put it out, the more exposure and interest we'll get from the community in running the space.
Okay. My question is that in 2018, we ran it?
Yes.
And it was successful? Well, successful is based on, if success is based on how it was run in 2017 and 2016, we were successful?
Yes.
Okay. And our discussion about the concession stand was the possibility of providing summer jobs for local youth. So why are we moving away from that?
So we were able to have some of you to be able to work through WDS. However, the expense, and I don't have those numbers in front of me, the expense of running it versus what we took in was not in our favor, because we paid somebody, a head person $8,000 for those four months in order to run it, and then the addition of purchasing food and supplies, it just, in the end, and I'll have the numbers for you at the next meeting, but we didn't turn a profit as a result of it.
But didn't WDS pay the staff?
They did. So if we didn't, if we had to pay staff, that would have added more to it. We had to have somebody in charge to kind of run the concession stand, somebody who those kids will report to. And so we had that, but yeah, we didn't.
So the revenue didn't come?
We had revenue, but it wasn't enough to meet our expenses. Yeah, we finished in the red.
Do you realize that the reports that we're getting today were not the reports that we got also on the home?
I think the reports that you got from the summer were probably not as complete as they should have been because they didn't take into account the amount that we paid that person to oversee the concession stand. If you take it versus what we paid for food versus what we got back, yes, we did turn a profit. But when you add that person who runs it...
Then we gotta modify something.
All right. What I'd like to do is to table that for further discussion. We may just have a...
Executive session?
An executive session, so we can hammer out some...
And I'll bring, I'll bring the complete set of numbers for you all to see.
Okay.
Marquette Park will be celebrating 100 years this summer. Marquette Park was given to the City of Gary from the U.S. Steel, August 30th, 1919. A various, a various amount of events are being planned for the summer, so this is just to inform you that it will be a summer of celebrations. We are asking the board for permission to run a new event special on the ballroom space from January 1st, 2019 until April 30th, 2019. This special will allow us to attract conferences, birthday, and business event during the off-season, and I idea attach a memo and a flyer for the special that we are asking for.
I will entertain a motion that we would approve the request for the special value permits for Marquette Pavilion, January through April, 2019.
Well, this is what's going on. If you make all these modifications, you don't make any money. I mean, why run it? Because what ended up costing us each time is what we got for the concession stand.
Right. Well, this is based on a downturn, a seasonal downturn. So from January through April, they're relatively slow in terms of events being rented, and this is an attempt to draw more events during that, during the downtime.
So what we face, and I see your point, Commissioner Williams, but what we face is either we try to do something to spur usage in the winter months, or we just don't have anything.
But if your cost is more than what you're going to take in...
Well, no, it's not. Yeah, we've been very, very diligent in making sure that our cost does not exceed what we expect to take in as a result of that. So, yeah, we definitely wouldn't do anything like that. It wouldn't be to our advantage, and we might as well just not rent it at all.
Is there a motion?
I think we just take this to the executive session, because based on what happened with the concession stand, if you run a business, you got all your employees paid. Something went wrong. If you got to run the business and all your payroll is paid, something else went wrong. Get out of it.
May I ask, Commissioner?
Go ahead.
Okay. This is a different situation. In this case, it is a rental fee instead of being at a certain...
I understand it very clear. I understand it very clear.
...level, instead of having no events, meaning zero income, you will get X amount and have for events, and meaning that with that, they order food, which they pay for. All you're doing is a slight reduction in the rental fee for the ballroom, which some may take that instead of, because they have events that are too large for down in the lower lounge, so they couldn't take advantage of that special. They might have considered the ballroom, but won't because it's a little added expense and the weather. January through April is very iffy in northwest Indiana and coming out of Miller, so it's another way of promoting your space to other people that may be thinking of something during the warmer months also.
So I'll give you a prime example. I ran into a City of Gary employee who was about to retire, and initially he was looking at some of our competitors as a place to have his retirement party. And so I ran into him, and he says, "Well, you know, I really want to do something in Gary, but I really can't afford to do it in Marquette. It's too much for me." So I said, "Okay, well, we're considering doing a special." I said, "I got to get the board's permission to do it, but we're considering doing a special. If we were to do this, would this help for this?" And when I explained it to him, he said, "Absolutely." He immediately asked me for Commissioner's phone number. He said, "I can definitely do this." And so it's, again, it's something that we're looking to do because just traditionally, we don't have much going on, and we have very little going on during those winter months. And, you know, we're fine during the summer. I think, Camisha, you're taking reservations for 2020.
For 2020, correct.
For 2020 at this point.
During the busy season.
Right. We're not extending this to our busy season, no. It's just for that, for that slight amount of, that brief period in the winter month where, you know, we need the activity, we need the revenue. Part of the other reason that we're doing this is, you know, you've noticed some of the events that Commissioner is doing, Soul Food, Sunday, the After Friday Relax, those are things that we can get people in to envision Marquette as being more than just a place for weddings. You know, we're fine with weddings. We've got weddings down to the science, but now we need some additional conventions, retreats, things like that in order to attract people. They're not the big-ticket items, but all of those pennies add up, even if they're not pennies. That's it.
Then I'll, again, call for a motion that we would approve the special, the special use prices for the down season of January through April. Is there a motion? There may be no motion. We will table it and move forward.
Okay.
The after-work relax and Southern Sunday brunch has turned out to be very well accepted by the community and very well attended. We have seen many new faces that would normally not come to Marquette, and I'm just asking you to please plan to attend one of these great events we have from January 2019 to April is when they'll be ending. Please come out and visit us. Marquette will end the year with a total of 206 events held at Marquette Park Pavilion or Marquette Park. The events at Marquette was 82. We had 90 in 2017. The picnic pavilion or Area 5, we had 26. 42 in 2017. The shelter rental, 70. We had 75 in 2017. And the special beach permits, 22, and we had 28 in 2017.
You know, I want to take that down, but I'm concerned. This department is probably one of the only departments that's taking a lot of money and planning the events. But if you keep planning the events, and the people who work for it got a salary that comes out of the general fund. If you keep planning the events and you give me total numbers, and we end up in the red, I mean, you can't get the dish order for what you fix. It makes me concerned about what's the style, what's going on, why the cost so much? And you tell me about all these events, but we don't have any money. I understand. And then there's one situation where we got all the employees are paid by somebody else, and we still don't make any money.
So that's the, that's the reason why we want to have more events in our offices, is because the numbers that Commissioner, so one of the things that Commissioner's been doing in her time is she's been closely examining the data, not only that I've been getting, but that you've been getting. And so in some cases, we're finding out that that data was not as accurate as if we were led to believe. And so it's our belief that we need to be transparent in everything that it is that we do, and we need to know exactly where we are in order to know where we're going. And so with Camisha examining the data and understanding where we are as far as this year versus last year and where we want to go, that's why we are, you know, taking an aggressive approach to try to increase the amount of events we have in order to increase the amount of revenue that we're taking.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Hudson Campbell, Dr. Smith?
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Quick update on our renovations. Our front area, the vestibule area, our handicap panel was installed around November 13th, along with the new doors off of the front vestibule area. I don't know if anyone noticed, but those doors were installed around November 13th. And our handicap railing in the front entrance that was installed actually right after the Thanksgiving holiday, and our security pad that we've been asking for at the front desk area, adjacent to the front desk at that door where the members enter, we've had a security pad installed as well. That way, it, members and anyone else, they're not just able to just aimlessly walk in and out and enter into the facility. So that has been a great help because we were really being challenged with the flow of traffic coming in and out. And so now with the security pad being reinstalled at the front desk area, everyone, they have to stop at the front desk without us trying to flag down members and asking them to make sure that they can kindly check in. So the security pad has allowed us to actually manage the flow of traffic, and it has cut down a lot of confusion. So that's been part of the renovations phase. Supply inventory control. Per President Gardner, I investigated the supply issue that we were having per your request last board meeting that we had. I did meet with Mr. Michael and Ms. Mary Ann from Ajax, and I indicated to them that perhaps they could partner with us and we could come up with at least one year of supply, and that way we can alleviate not having enough supplies. And so Superintendent and I, we sat down and I got a quote from Ajax, and Mary Ann, they gave us a quote for about two years at first. I know at first that's what you and I discussed. That initial quote was about $4,700, so we went back and they reworked the quote, so now it's down to about $3,900. You all should have an attachment in your packet. And so right now, what we're looking at is approximately maybe six to 12 months of supplies. That way, we can manage internally a little better, and then the staff here, we're not, the maintenance staff, we're not looking to have frequent purchase orders being sent through for approvals every two to three months. And so that's what we're working on now, and I've investigated that. So we're looking at possibly contracting with them because, you know, the order is pretty sized in terms of amount, but that's what we're looking at now. So that is the reworked quote. The initial quote was roughly about $650 more than that. So when we went back and they gave us a revised quote, it's about at $3,900 now. So that would carry us for about nine to 12 months. And everyone's, I'm sorry?
You have supply closet to...
We do.
This under lock and key?
We do.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
And you're your own revenue stream, correct?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
So this is well within your budget?
Yeah, it falls within our line item.
It does.
Yeah, they have a line item specifically for that, so, yeah, it does.
Are we doing anything with automatic dispense cleaning solutions?
Yes, we have one set up in the, one of our maintenance closets that Centas maintains for its own revenue basis. So they kind of refill it, is it every two weeks?
Uh, yes.
Is it every two weeks?
Yes. Every other Friday, they do come in, and they maintain the urinals and all of the other supplies that they refill for us.
Yeah, I think we've had that in place for about maybe four years, three or four years.
Any other questions?
So, membership at a glance. What I've been investigating since I've been in this role, of course, are memberships and those employees that are city employees and for payroll deductions. So I've been tasked with inputting those payroll deductions after each payroll period. And so what I have analyzed is that we have several city employees, they do support by having their memberships payroll deducted, but what I'm also seeing is that they're not utilizing the facility. So I would like to further investigate why they're not utilizing the facility by a way of perhaps generating some type of survey instrument, because we have several employees that it's being payroll deducted, but I'm not physically seeing them utilizing the facility. So forthcoming, I will be generating some surveys to just inquire out why the gym is not being utilized, because we have a lot of employees that are being, it's payroll deducted, but they're not utilizing the facility. As far as future opportunities for revenue is concerned, I do have a lot of vision. I'm not going to have a table for a discussion today, but it will be within the next board meeting. I'll have a plan in place so that you all can see a snapshot of what it is, what my intentions are. I've shared some of them with Superintendent, and there are ways that I am looking at, that I envision, how we can generate more revenue for the facility. There'll be some after-hour extracurricular activities. I would like for it to be family-oriented so that it is enjoyable for everyone. And right now, we're at the peak of our biddy season. Biddy just officially kicked off December 1st. So every Saturday, biddy pretty much utilizes the entire facility almost because they're upstairs and they're downstairs. And so what I would like to propose in my plan, I'll have that ready to be presented next board meeting. And what it is that I want to do is I would like to wait till the season is over with because it will allow us to accommodate more of what we need to do, considering that biddy is every Saturday now. And then they also utilize the facility throughout the week for practices. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Gleason Golf Course?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Not a lot to report this way.
Not a lot to report. Just doing the winter maintenance, and I've been in contact with the insurance company for the, for the city travelers, and I believe that Sanitary District sent a contractor out there to get a price on the pumps and things like that. And from what my, from what the insurance lady that I've been speaking with, the quote seemed a little bit astronomical to me. It was $480,000 to... It was four hundred and eighty thousand dollars to replace that whole thing. Um, yesterday, I met with someone from Pro Pump. And to do, he, he's going to give us a quote to do all the demo, rebuild the garage and that. He was two seventy-five. But what he did say is, you know, all that stuff is time consuming. The pump itself is a hundred and ten thousand dollars to replace it, brand new, the whole system. So, all that other stuff is, the demolition, it's, it's more of the work that, that we can do. Um, and then I would imagine, you know, that's just one quote. I'm trying to get other vendors up. The problem with the Flotronics system like that is even though it's used nationwide, it's such a big unit that there just aren't a lot of companies. You know, there's one or two in the Chicagoland area, one in Indianapolis, one in Columbus, Ohio. And so, it's not like you can just go in the Yellow Pages and find someone that, that has a Flotronics, um, pump, you know, a pump station. So...
Okay, so how did that turn out in terms of the, the perpetrator, for lack of a better word, uh, and whether they had insurance or where, where are we, you know?
They did not have insurance. They did not have insurance and the car that, um, the gentleman was driving was not his vehicle. So, even if he had it, I'm not sure if it, it wouldn't have covered.
But the owner of the vehicle had insurance?
No, no. Uh, so, right now, um, you know, everything has been turned over to our insurance company. But the, um, legal department for the city is also involved, um, as well. As a matter of fact, I just had an email with the, uh, with the corporate council, uh, council last night, to just further discuss what our options are as far as holding, um, holding the person's cause accountable. I don't know if there's any judgments that can be levied against him or anything. And even if there were, you know, your attorney can speak to this. You get the money from him.
Yeah, you can get a judgment, but if he does not get the money, it doesn't mean anything. So, we can still go through the process and see what he has, a discovery of assets. But the city, uh, they can start their process and I can follow up on it.
So, what the city has insurance?
Yes, we do have insurance there. And possibly the Sanitary District also if it's, if they have that building on there. Because they, if you, if you've gone past the golf course recently, it's flooded. Because we cannot get, you know, the one thing about that pump was it was a dual purpose. It not only got here to hit the golf course, you know, we know that that's the lowest spot, you know? I mean, it's a, it floods and we can no longer remove the water from the golf course either, you know? Because that pump did that also. So, I mean, it's, it's, it did some damage. There's no question about it. I've also looked, I emailed Nate on some other options. You know, there is a big TurfNet magazine, you know? I mean, it's, it's about all the courses in the country. Deerfield, Illinois, the country club there has a pump that's ten years old that they're, that they've had, um, maintained every year. New frequency drive and that, same exact pumps as ours. It's fifteen thousand dollars, you know, you can pick it up. So, there are other options to not, if we don't, if it doesn't have to be brand new. I mean, everyone wants it brand new. But when you go to these country clubs and that, that maintain their equipment, you know, I mean, our pump was put in nineteen seventy-six, I believe. So, I mean, it's forty-two years old. They last a long time, as long as, and that is one thing the Sanitary District has also helped us with. Is they come in, repack the bearings and, and really, you know, pump besides the motor and the bearings, that's all there is. Because it just spins, it's a motor that spins the pump. And motors are only twenty-five hundred dollars. And it's the whole Flotronic system, the circuit boards and that, that have it operate, you know? So, that when you punch it into a satellite box, it waters throughout the evening and things like that.
Do we have any, any projection of time table? Or if not, can we produce one that says by X date, we will know this and by X date, we will do this? Is, is that possible? Because if not, we're looking at golfing season with a flooded golf course and, and, you know, not being open for business at all. Uh, so, so, you know, I'm hearing that we have insurance. I'm hearing that there's a relationship related to that pump between the Sanitary District and the city and the park board. So, my question is, you know, can we produce a timetable for these things to occur that allows us to open at a reasonable, uh, at a reasonable date in the spring? How do we do that?
So, I, I've, I've stressed to our insurance, um, representative, the importance of getting back open by then. And they have been pretty responsive as far as getting the adjusters out, um, as far as getting all of the documentation we need in order to get that done. But I, I'll, uh, I'll ask specifically for something in writing, um, of her and then I'll, I'll forward that to you.
Yeah, here's what I would like. I would like a complete layout, uh, of, you know, that, that begins with options for options that the insurance company will cover. Okay? Followed by, uh, a projected date of purchase, a projected date of installation. And, and so, so, you know, and some idea of an opening date for the golf course with those items in place and working.
I can say that, that, you know, for me personally, I do not need a pump until May, usually around April, end of April, May. We do have a farm pump that we can back into the pond. And with the Sanitary District's okay, we pump that water off the golf course with a, with a manual pump, with a farm pump. It's from, off a PTO on a tractor. That is an option. Because I do not need the water and the rains and that until I start fertilizing. Ground temp has to be fifty-five degrees before I do that kind of stuff. So, if there is a, a date in place, you know, I can work around that. You know, I mean, even if it, even if it is not until May, I don't need irrigation until then. So...
Okay, I can, I can respect that. Uh, but, but basically, you know, my experience is that if we don't nail some things down that establish some sense of accountability, it doesn't happen.
Right.
Right. So, and the only way to make it happen is to produce the necessary paperwork and signatures that back up some system of accountability. So, if, I, I would like to see that. I would like to have that done. And even if, you know, whatever the dates are, you know, if we're using it, and I've seen that unit you just described in use at the golf course, and, and, and that's fine if that, if that would be done.
Right.
You know, but what we want, a timetable for the refurbishment and replacement of that system. We, we need that.
All right, I'll try to add that by the next, uh, exec, by the executive session.
Okay, or, or at least, uh, you know, by, you know, by our second meeting in, uh, in January. So, you got a little time. We're going into Christmas, but, you know...
So, my question to you then is, do I also, do I look at used equipment? I mean, brand new equipment may not be covered by insurance with that much of the amount.
I think we have to be able to look at all options. So, you know, it'll come down to a matter of choice and a matter of available funding. But, uh, let's bring all the information that we can get to the table.
Okay. Let's all have.
Thank you.
All right, Christine Bottics.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everything is winterized.
Turn this back a little bit.
Okay. Everything is winterized. Um, I sat out there with them while they did the renovation to make sure everything was done properly. Um, so, everything is put up. Um, we have one issue going on right now at Tolleson. We have someone that consistently keep breaking into the poolhouse. Um, working right now with the police to try to resolve the problem. They keep going in. Not pretty vandalizing, more of a...
Socialization.
Social, yeah, socializing. It's sort of more of a house security issue than more of them.
Yeah, we had the same problem last year. And Christine discovered it once we, um, started getting the pools and the poolhouse ready last year. And so, we noticed it. So, it's probably the same people. And so, again, she mentioned that we're working with the police department to address this. But we're also putting some other things in place, obviously, to, to make sure that we catch the people who are doing it and hold them accountable to the full extent of the law. So...
Um, yeah. Um, we're working on different programs for, um, the parks, more recreation with the beach and more inclusion. So, everyone can come and participate in the parks. So, it's not just for kids, you know, for the, you know, for seniors, anyone with disabilities. We want everyone to be able to come out and enjoy the parks. I just worked on, did another grant to try to have some little extra monies. You know, we do the water company and so, we get money, little, just a little amount of money to do the water sampling. And so, for the recreation that we want to do, whether they give us to do the water sampling, we'll be able to use that for just little supplies made for kickboards and stuff like that to go towards the pools.
I assume they have one question for clarification.
Yes.
So, what you had told us today is that all of our splash pads...
Everything.
And all of our, we'll put Tolleson in the pool, were winterized, winterized and put to bed properly.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Everything was put in bed and done.
Want to talk briefly about, um, the collaboration with the Gary Schools? What's going on for that?
We're still working on it. They're still trying to find a coach. I'm unable to coach because of the time. I'm not often timed to be able to coach. But the schools are trying, Westside didn't pull back up. So, right now, they want to use, um, the Y pool to, for their kids, for the middle school and for the high school. So, right now, I just kind of helped them and guided them in the right direction of what they need to do. But I really can't do the whole program because coaching takes up a lot of time. And just right now, I cannot dedicate full time to do coaching for middle schools and high school and the program like...
Yeah, so the purpose of, of doing this is not only to continue to, to teach as many kids to, to learn how to swim, but also for us to just have a, a qualified group of Gary citizens who will give the pool a front for life guards.
Yes.
We usually have about eighty percent of our lifeguards and usually Gary residents. So, um, you know, we're definitely striving towards that hundred percent. Programs like this will assist us in doing that.
Thank you.
Kayana Youth Services Bureau.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, so, we are, Youth Services Bureau, we are looking for current youth council members. Um, those members can be from eighth grade to eleventh. We're going to cut it off. We do not want to have twelfth graders because they graduate, then they're gone and we have to start all over again. So, we are currently looking for youth council members. Um, you can email me with a referral if you have a youth that you think would, that is involved in civic engagement or would enjoy it. You can email me that name or you can call eight eight one five two seven zero, extension six five one three, and you'll get me and leave that information. Um, we have, Youth Services is doing a winter workshop this year. And so, what we're doing is for the time that the youth are out of school, which is the twenty-fourth through the fourth of January, December twenty-fourth through the fourth of January, we are going to do a winter workshop for those youth. So, the parents who would normally have their children in school, they can bring them to re-part between the hours of nine and two from the twenty-seventh to the fourth. We will have that available for them. Um, we will have breakfast, we will have lunch. We've already connected, uh, connected with the Indiana Department of Education to make sure that we are able to have food for them. So, we're looking for any youth that are, that would like to come and participate in this workshop. It is open, it is free, and it is available to you. We do have some, um, open positions. They are temporary though. Um, they have a ten-week lifespan and this is through our Cities Connecting Children to Nature grant. We have a youth leader and we have a program assistant. Those people who are interested in that have to have some experience with nature because that's what this grant is about. So, if they don't have experience with nature, we really will wait, want you to wait until the summer.
What do you mean by experience with nature?
Um, so, our biggest thing right now is we really want to go into gardening because we want to teach the kids how to be able to survive for themselves. God forbid something happens, they're able to grow their own vegetables, they're able to grow their own fruit. And it's just something that everybody should know how to do. So, some skills in there. If you're a nature person and you like to hike, you know something about plants, you know something about butterflies, you know why these plants are native to Gary, we're looking for you. Those are the type of people that we're looking for, um, to come in and then teach our young people. So, those are the type of people that we're looking for. Um, we have submitted our, uh, first, the first phase of our implementation plan for the Cities Connecting Children to Nature grant. We have submitted that, uh, report on the thirtieth of November. They'll give us feedback tomorrow. So, they'll let us know, hey, you might want to tune this up, you might want to tighten this up. And then we'll resubmit it again and then they'll let us know if we'll get those additional fifty thousand dollars funds. Um, and that will be fifty thousand dollars over the course of the next three years. Um, we are so excited. Last year, we had a, uh, environmental climate conference for the youth. It was just for Gary. This year, we're doing it on a bigger scale. We've invited people. We've invited youth from Indianapolis. We've invited youth from the surrounding areas, the schools. So, we are doing an environmental conference. It is January third. Again, this is a free event. It, the time is nine to two. And we'll have, we will have breakfast, we will have lunch. We have a lot of different organizations that are coming in to do workshops for our youth to teach them about the environment, to teach them about the climate. So, we can change the habits, you know, our daily habits that are maybe destroying our environment to make our youth aware. So, that is again, a free, uh, session for youth. It is when school is out. So, again, it helps parents out. It's from nine to two. We are offering transportation. However, we will only pick up at schools. So, we'll go to, um, certain schools. If they tell us they have youth, we'll go to those schools and we'll pick them up at certain times. And that's just because our van is only so big and we can't, you know, hit all the spots in Gary. So, we will pick up at schools. Again, uh, you can call us, eight eight one five two seven zero, extension six five one three, to register your child. It's also on the, uh, Gary website. I've asked Lil' Oso to put it on there. So, it's also on there. And you can actually register through, I'm trying to think of it, what is it called? Eventbrite. So, you can also register through Eventbrite. It's garyenvironmentalsummit dot eventbrite dot com. Also, if you would like to be a vendor or if you would like to be a sponsor for, for anything. If you want to sponsor some donuts, if you want to sponsor some juice, we are more than welcome and welcoming of those gifts. So, just let us know. We're looking forward to that. Um, and that would be at the Genesis. If I did not say that, that would be in the Genesis Convention Center. So, we're really excited about that and we're doing that in conjunction with Green Urbanism. Um, back in September, we talked about the administrative review that we received from the Indiana, Indiana Department of Education for our summer feeding. Um, our biggest thing, the biggest thing that we have was on training. It was not a surprise to myself. I think it wasn't a surprise to our superintendent either. Um, things were kind of, it was kind of funky around that time. So, a lot of training that should have happened did not happen. And then we had some mishaps with the van having the accident and that type of thing. So, there were some things that needed to be done that we kind of slacked on. We were aware of them. Um, so, what has happened is we received an administrative review. They went around to a couple of the sites and said, you need to have the Justice for All poster. We knew that one of our sites didn't. Um, we weren't doing monitoring the way that we should have. And all of that comes back to the necessary training that should take place. I was trained this year, another person was trained, but because we did not have adequate staff, we had to do training for everyone else. This year, they have asked that we attend their training as well as any, uh, sites that we sponsor. They will have to, uh, attend that, uh, Indiana Department of Education training, which is actually a great thing because you're getting it from the experts and there's no room for error. You can't leave out anything because they're going to give us all that we need. So, the response is due by December twentieth. I've already completed it. Just looking for, uh, Superintendent George to review it. I completed it yesterday. So, he'll be reviewing it sometime this week. And then we'll send it off to the Department of Education. One of the most exciting things is I recently attended the Indiana Kids Conference. Um, I remember talking to you guys about a lot of training that we needed to do with Youth Services. We work with youth, but sometimes we get people who don't like youth. We get employees who are not familiar with working with youth, who don't know how to connect with youth. So, we've been going to a lot of different trainings. And I was awarded a scholarship to go to, uh, Indiana Youth Institute, which was a training that was in Indianapolis. It was two days. They paid for that. I only needed to pay for the hotel. It was amazing. It was one of the best conferences that I've ever gone to. I was able to get a training which is called, uh, QPR, Question Persuade and Refer. And what that is, is so... And what that is, is suicide prevention. So I am now certified to be able to take a call from a youth or an adult that is thinking about committing suicide. And I can talk to them. I have a number that I can refer them to call. I have some things that, there's a card that I have that kind of gives me some key pointers to talk to them about, to kind of guide them towards where they need to go so that suicide is not the option for them. This is excellent because every teacher in the state of Indiana has to have this training. It was awarded to us for free. We did not have to pay for it. It's good for two years. So that is excellent. So I think it's in the board package, that training. Also, there were some points that we were able to receive, like some credits that we were able to receive because of our attendance in this conference. I think it was like eleven credit points that we can use towards, is it nature? What does it come at? Yeah, it's on your package, but there are some credit points which helps us as an organization. It kind of gives us a foundation of where we are going in regards to being a Youth Service Bureau and not just a recreation site. So I did put those into your board package. We are very excited about that. We have, when we leave here, we're going to another webinar. So training is something that we're continuing to do as a Youth Services Bureau because we want the people that work with the youth in our city to know what they're doing and how to handle any situation that might come. And we want them to keep the youth engaged. That is my.
Any questions, comments, or boardrooms?
I just want to congratulate you on your QPR training.
Thank you.
Superintendent.
So I have attached the non-reverting budgets for your review. And any changes that you see are reflected in yellow, highlighted on the for-year review. We went to Finance Committee last night to discuss them. Myself and all of the managers of each of the revenue centers to discuss them. And so went and answered councilperson's questions, but I wanted to make sure that you all had an opportunity to look at them and review them for your question. Did anybody have any questions?
So what's our bottom line as opposed to last year?
So, I'll go one by one. In Hudson Campbell, we proposed, so our front desk person has also been serving as the chair yoga instructor. And really done it, got the certification for it. And it's been truly an asset to the facility. Every time that the seniors come, that's a three dollar visit that we get credit for. And we get a check from Silver Sneakers at the end of the month. Usually it averages anywhere from six hundred and eight hundred dollars a month. Typically, the, well, not typically, the senior citizen rate is twelve dollars a month. But every time they come, they pay up to eight visits. So we get twenty-four dollars a month. And so last year, Ms. Clark was just the front desk specialist. And so we've expanded her title since her responsibilities have changed as well. And so we've made her the front desk attendant slash senior citizen coordinator, fitness coordinator. And so as a result, we've increased her salary to sixteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. She is part-time. The next one you'll see is a custodian, a part-time custodian position for thirty hours a week. Currently, the, we have two full-time and one part-time custodians at the Hudson Campbell. The fourth custodian comes out of the Parks Fund Two Fifty. And so what we would like to do is have a dedicated person from the Hudson Campbell to work at the Hudson Campbell. And then to use that custodian position for the Parks Department, for the Parks Department. And so we know there are opportunities for us to have weekend rentals that we're not able to capitalize on because we don't have the staff who's available to clean up or set up after any event on a night. So we've asked for an additional part-time custodian position. And then our front desk evening person, quite honestly, just did not have enough hours allocated to his position. He's budgeted for eighteen hours a week. However, we need him at least twenty-five to thirty hours a week because when you have shift changes, they need to be there at least a half an hour prior to their shift. So that each person can count down the drawer collectively so then they can reconcile what's in the register. If there are any mistakes, we know where the mistakes are made from, we can correct those. And so us only having that person allocated at eighteen hours a week didn't allow us to do so. So we didn't change the amount per hour that he was getting, but we did change the number of hours that we are budgeting for. There was one more I left out. There was the fitness coordinator. So we've been without a fitness coordinator since the middle of October. That person was also given the task of teaching and facilitating Silver Sneakers classes, which would generate revenue for the facility. In addition, you know, this person was responsible for maintaining the weights or making sure weights were put up, making sure members were utilizing the weights correctly, making sure that he gave advice on what to do and not to do those kinds of things. And so that position has been open since mid-October, and we have not had anybody apply for the position, which is a rarity for us. And so going back and studying and trying to see if this position was in line with some of our competitors. The twenty-four thousand dollar rate was extremely low. And so the range that I saw from some of our competitors was between thirty, twenty-six and thirty-five thousand. And so we decided to, we needed to make the position more attractive because the position is really a position that we need. And so we proposed to increase it by two thousand dollars. On the flip side, on the operations side.
Oh, I had a question about Hudson Campbell. So now will the fitness coordinator also serve as a trainer?
Yes.
Okay. Because you know, you do need that for.
Yes. Absolutely.
New members or just anyone that comes to the club?
They have to have that certified, certified personal training certification.
So currently you have two positions open at Hudson Campbell, the fitness coordinator and then the custodian.
Well, the fitness coordinator is the open position. The custodian is the proposed new position that we would like to create. So if everything goes fine, then yeah, we'll have a second opening. But currently, yeah, we have that one open. Also dealing with Hudson Campbell, I should also point out, so this year, when I looked yesterday, we had a little over a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in revenue. When you compare it to last year, again, I've said this repeatedly, you can't compare last year to this year because there were points where we were closed because of the renovations. So last year we made a hundred and fifteen thousand in revenue. But the year before that, we had a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in revenue. And so we've seen a significant increase. We think that trend is going to continue. We hope that trend is going to continue. And so there are certain investments that we need in order to make sure that we're giving, making a quality product for people to utilize. And so we've made the investments and the maintenance equipment that we need with the auto scrub and the Clark TFC four hundred. And so we're really excited about the opportunity to use those to maintain the facility. But now we need to make investments into some of the cardio equipment. Strength equipment is fine. Cardio equipment we need to make investments in. So we increased the line item for machinery and equipment to twenty thousand dollars. It was at ten thousand last year. This is really contingent on us having the funds available to do so. So we know we are a facility that's non-reverting and we can only spend what we have in our bank. And so, you know, we want to have the flexibility and the opportunity to purchase equipment if that opportunity presents itself. Any questions on Hudson Campbell before I talk about Marquette?
I also wanted to talk, ask you about the health guard now that we've approved that. Any numbers or any dates on opening and maybe soft regular revenue figures?
Yeah, so our attorney has sent a, an email to the, to the person who was awarded the bid, the bid that you accepted. And so they're in the process of negotiating it to go up with some final numbers. So as soon as that's finalized, we'll. All right. Marquette Park Pavilion, the only change we made to Marquette is we took the ticket takers that were on the park side and moved them to the Marquette Park Pavilion. It just made better sense to do it that way because that's where the revenue is collected and deposited into their account. So it didn't make sense for us to keep those positions under Fund Two Fifty when they're actually, the revenue that's generated actually goes to this account. So it just made better sense to put them all under this account. But that was the only change that we made. Any questions about Marquette Park? Okay, and the last one was Gleason Golf Course. We made one change to Gleason. Throughout the course of the year, we noticed that we had three cashier positions that were on the books. We quickly noticed that we only needed two of the three. So we eliminated one of the golf cashier positions. And that was it. So that reduces our budget by five thousand five hundred dollars. Any questions about the question?
Let's see what the golf cashier.
Yes.
The person that's just basically take up the money, they'll sell it.
No, they, well, we don't have a pro shop.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, really all they do is.
Take the money.
Take the money.
Right. Do you know there's a system you can put in, the only thing they have to do is put a card in it, and you don't need that.
So we have a system that was here that they'll be using, but you still need a person to run it in order to do it. They can have a key tag, they can scan it, but if they're not a member or if you just have somebody who just pops in on a particular day who says, hey, I want to play eighteen holes, you still got to have somebody who is there and available to be able to take their money if they're not an official member of the golf course. That's what our, I think the important thing for us is to make sure that we're not complacent with the situation and that we have a plan in place. Then we adjust. I think Don gave a plan that anticipated that this year would be a revenue. According, next year, the years after that will be different because of what we, at the end. Have to be, we've done, else being frivolous with any of the revenue that we earned. How we attract people into each of these revenue centers. And they thrive investments based on. But that's, that's an ongoing easy answer for it. At the last executive, we talked about parents, a couple of parents who seeking refund to get the conclusion. Which is a good number for us to consider. Or with that, and some correspondence with the couple. Contributing towards collecting.
Boardroom. That we would remove or that we would approve. Liquor department. Finals with and to.
Gleason?
Yes.
Commissioner.
I attached a review. And so at the last Monday, the board did. From our construction. HVAC. Bring, visit. When they first. Then it is. There's a across the. For us to replace the tile along the perimeter, kind of closer to the wall. But now it doesn't make sense to just do that when you've got this huge crack in the floor and you're investing so much money into it. So at the last board meeting, the board decided that it would be best to, excuse me, to rebid to see what the numbers were before we ultimately decided to do something about the flooring. So the concern is redo the flooring, but once you take the tile up to investigate what the problem is, fix it, and then put a new flooring in its place. Damage deposit. So Reverend Garland and I had a discussion with the group at Roosevelt, was it November thirtieth? So some very good things came out as a result of it. But one of the discussions that we had was, and this is not just specifically for Roosevelt Pavilion, but any of our pavilions, when we rent them out, we don't have a mechanism in place that protects us financially. If somebody does any damage or if somebody doesn't clean the place after. You know, after that meeting that Reverend Garland and I had with them, you all get your feedback on how you felt about having a damaged deposit. I still need to work out, you know, how we do this in conjunction with the finance department to make sure that people get their deposits back in a timely manner, that they're not waiting weeks and months that we're able to get it back to them. This is absolutely something to do. Excuse me, I'm proposing that it be a hundred dollars and that B is left in the, it's found and all appliances are left in the same condition that we return the hundred dollar deposit back to the people who are in the facility.
Questions or comments for boardrooms?
So can we put together a checklist?
Sure.
Of just exactly what you're looking for, or do you have that in place already?
We don't. This is something, yeah, this is something I want to, I want to start doing.
Were you going to be accepting personal checks or were we going to actually going to be putting up the money? I mean, because you, you know, that can go both ways, so.
It was my preference to kind of take a personal check and then just hold it and then just give it back to them once everything is okay. I need to clear with the finance department to make sure we're not violating any kind of we won't get dinged by the state board of accounts. So that's something that, you know, those details will be coming, you know, we'll be fine tuning those things. But that's, that's definitely a concern. I don't want to take any cash.
We even discussed using photographs.
Okay.
Before and after as our.
And having our security because each of, each of the events has security. So I still assist with verifying that everything was left in proper condition. It's not something that happens, I don't even remember it happening over the course of my year as superintendent, something like that happening. But we have a plan for those things that, you know, sometimes may happen. But we have a plan for those things that, you know, sometimes may happen.
Tech Park Pavilion, there is a provision in their contract for a security deposit, not just a. Jizz or anything like that. So you may want to look and see how that is written and what the procedure is. That may help you.
But there, I, I know their procedure is in. Same process in order to get it done. So with this one, yeah.
No, that, that's because the, that particular example, I used to work in Marquette. That's why I'm answering this. That particular one, they wrote one check and I think that's what happened. And that's not usually the case.
But in terms of, in terms of not reinventing the wheel and, and having something to, to review to start to work with, that's available to us.
Yes. I'll be preparing an end of the year report. Many has been given that task. So I'll be preparing an end of the year report that has to be submitted by December 28th. Make sure to share that with everybody and then we can discuss it further at our next board meeting in, in January. Park shelters and park permits. So this year, we had confusion. People would use the shelters. People would use the parks without getting open air permits or any permits to use a facility or pay the rental fee to do it. It's, it's something that we are working on collaboration with the Special Advance Committee. And so it's our hope that we all have a sheet or a form that is universal for all departments that will be distributed. Soon as, you know, we're finished fine tuning that, that process. I'll share it with the rest of you. Park office relocation. So we are back where we first started. The Parks Office is back at 455 Massachusetts Street. We started moving Wednesday. Mostly, everybody is here except for me. So I'll, I'll get here eventually. But if anybody is looking for the Parks Office, we're now at 455 Massachusetts Street. The Fire Department administrative staff is at 200 East Fifth Avenue, which is one block away. But I wanna thank all of the staff who boxed and gathered their stuff together and the staff who, who have been lifting, doing the heavy lifting and moving. And I also wanna thank the Fire Department as well for their assistance and making sure that we get a smooth transition.
But you're here. You're here.
We're here.
So do we have, do you have any speakers?
Well, I got, I got one last thing, last but not least. And I did put this on the agenda because I wasn't sure she wanted me to say it. But our fiscal manager, Victoria Ward, will be retiring at the beginning of next year. She'll be moving on to bigger, better things. And so I definitely wanna thank her for her years of service with us. We're going to miss her, her whittiness around, around a, a facility. And so definitely wanna thank her and wish her well on her retirement. We're gonna be tapping her head before she leaves just to make sure we get every, every bit of peace and knowledge before she leaves, so. That concludes my report. Commissioner.
I don't see any, uh, anyone who signed up or if they did, they didn't stay. So I'll entertain a motion that meeting adjourned.
So moved.
All right.